All right, I hear you call the order of the Boardman City Hall. Uh, meeting Tuesday, June sixth, up fifteen P M. To order, we'll stand and do the black salute. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
All right, roll call and excuse absence. Looks like we have Heather who has is in our team's absence. Other than that, we have six council members here. So we'll go right on to approval of May, the regular meetings of May second, twenty twenty-three. Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
During discussion, anybody like to have on that? Having hearing them, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of minutes May sixteen, twenty twenty-three, Budget Committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May sixteen.
I'll say that.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, special meeting.
Yes, fair. I move to approve Seth Lee Minister on third, twenty twenty.
And I'll second.
I got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our last minute, the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three workshop.
I'll make the motion and go May twenty-third workshop. I think.
You got a mo- motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, public hearing. Didn't we just do that? You have to do one for each budget. Oh. Okay. Make sure. All right, so we're doing a public hearing for our city of Boardman. Budget. So the public hearing on the twenty twenty-three budget is hereby called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. A staff report, public comment, and the balling order for opponents, opponents, neutral comments, and a rebuttal event in any. Then we will close the public hearing. Comments, if you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. I'll recognize those people who speak. Any questions should be addressed through me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium, and as the hearing is being recorded, please keep comments concise and to the point. Now I ask the members of the city council to disclose any conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of this conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Does anyone in the audience, actually, I need to ask, are there any members who wish to declare conflict of interest? Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge a city councillor's impartiality as far as the city of budget, city of Boardman budget? All right, staff report. City manager Protem Soko will be presenting this staff report.
Okay, uh, as you're aware, uh, we have public meetings regarding the budget recapping the budget meeting um, in which the budget committee approved budget. Uh, I would recommend that, uh, the city adopt twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget as approved by the budget committee in the amount of seventy-four million two hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars.
We're looking for a motion.
We're actually a good public comment section.
Oh, that is correct. Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
So we have the proponents comments. Anybody who wishes to be against it? Or for, excuse me, for it. Having hearing nothing for people for, we just had that. Is there anybody who opposes? Having hearing none, we have no neutral, and we have no rebuttal. So this public hearing is now closed. Now, we'll go to the red step.
I move to approve resolution number ten dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty twenty-four budget as approved by the budget committee on May sixteen, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of seventy-four million, two hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight.
So I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion anybody would like to have over this? Having hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That will take care of our public hearing. Did we get that?
We did. That's all right. They can go back up now and then, um, go to about a comment.
Do we have public comment right now? Yes, we're good. We're good on the resolution. It's kind of definitely, that's okay. We can get back in and translate. Oh. So the resolution, I shouldn't have, we shouldn't have voted on that.
That's okay.
You're okay. It's okay. I do that every single time. So every single time.
I would recommend, uh, public comment, and, and, uh, we do have a prearranged presentation, so if we get, uh, into that earlier, soon, that would be good.
Does anybody in the audience wish to have some public comment? Anybody online wish to have any public comment? All right, having hearing then, we'll go on to our prearranged presentation, Elaine Howard Consulting, forming a new urban renewal district.
Yes, so, uh, let me real quick introduce Elaine Howard. She's with Elaine Howard Consulting LLC. Uh, we've been working with Elaine, uh, we have in the past and are working with her now to try to transform the, uh, new urban renewal district in the north, uh, portion of the city. Um, and I think Elaine is going to give us a, uh, kind of a quick, uh, one-on-one to, uh, urban renewal and talk a little bit about the urban renewal. So, uh, Elaine?
Hi, I need someone to allow me to share my screen. So I'm Elaine Howard. I've been doing urban renewal consulting since two thousand and six and work all over the state of Oregon. Um, so I work with a lot of your neighbors. I'm working with Hermiston and Pendleton and La Grande. Um, so know your part of Oregon very well. And I can now share my screen. So I'm going to give you a briefing tonight on just some urban renewal general background, so urban renewal one-on-one. Talk a little bit about a proposed urban renewal area in Boardman. Talk about some of the projects that you might do within that area, what a potential timeline looks like, and what the process and next steps are. Some terminology that helps as we go through this is U R A stands for urban renewal area. That is the distinct area in which an urban renewal tax increment financing project can be done, and the area from which property taxes, uh, existing property taxes pay for those projects to be done. T I F is tax increment financing, and I'll go into that a little bit more on future sides, but that is the money that comes from taxes that are paid after the formation of an urban renewal area. M I is maximum indebtedness. Maximum indebtedness gets established at the time that an urban renewal plan is adopted by the city council, and it is the total amount of money that you may spend on projects, programs, and administration over the life of an urban renewal plan. Or S four five seven is the statute that governs urban renewal in Oregon. So if you ever want to read more about urban renewal and what's allowed, that is the statute that covers what you may and may not do in an urban renewal area. Urban renewal areas function off of property tax revenues. Though they are not increases in our property taxes, but it's off of the property tax revenue that each of us pays off of our property every November. Our property taxes increase in Oregon for only two reasons. One is a three percent statutorily allowed increase in assessed values, and that typically happens every year unless we're in a deep recession, and then either substantial improvements or new construction. Those are the only reasons why our property taxes may go up. Our property taxes typically go to the assessor's office and then straight to the regular taxing jurisdictions. Those taxing jurisdictions are the city county, the school district, the port. When an urban renewal area is formed within a city, that specific area uh, is calculated differently by the assessor. So after the area is formed, the assessor calculates what's called a frozen base assessed value. So that's the total assessed value of all properties within that area. The taxes off of that frozen base assessed value continue going to all of the property taxing districts. But any increases in value over the lifetime of the urban renewal area, so that is that three percent property tax increase that's allowed, and then any new construction or substantial rehabilitation goes to the urban renewal agency for the lifetime of the urban renewal area until the area reaches its maximum indebtedness. An urban renewal area functions off an income source. That income source is those yearly property tax, uh, revenues that are received from the assessor's office. It has expenses, and right before this, you adopted a budget for your urban renewal agency. So you have programs, projects, and administration, and have to adopt your annual budget. And it has the spending limit, which is capped by that maximum indebtedness. That maximum indebtedness is different in every urban renewal plan, so you have two existing plans that each has its own maximum indebtedness. And again, that's the total amount of money that may be spent on projects, programs, and administration over the life of the plan. The impact of tax increment financing or TIF financing is on taxing districts, not on property taxpayers. It comes from the increased assessed values during the duration of the area. It's called a division of taxes from those taxes that are already paid. It's not an increased tax. And so we always want to make sure that everyone understands that it's not a new tax on property taxpayers, but it is an impact on property taxing districts. This shows the animation that I showed a few slides ago, just in a different form. So if an area is formed in two thousand and uh, twenty-three, the first property tax revenues come in fiscal year in twenty twenty-five. So that frozen base is those property tax revenues that continue going to all the taxing districts over the life of the area based on the assessed value of the area at the time it's adopted. That area in green is the amount of funds that come from any increased value within the urban renewal area, and that goes to the agency. Once the area expires, and this shows a thirty-year area, but we've done areas that are twenty years, twenty-five years, or thirty years, and we don't know yet which yours will be. We'll do some financial projections and come, come back to the city staff with those. But once the area expires, then any of that increased assessed value, which was realized within the area, goes back to all the taxing districts for them to use um, to, to do their services. There are state limitations on the use of urban renewal for cities with a population of under fifty thousand. You may have twenty-five percent of your assessed value of property uh, within the city in an urban renewal area and twenty-five percent of your acreage. If you have an existing plan, it cannot be increased in size by more than twenty percent of the original plan acreage. There's no provision to change that. That's a hard and fast rule. The maximum indebtedness cannot be increased by more than twenty percent of the original maximum indebtedness. That can be overridden if you get, um, approval by seventy-five percent of the tax, taxing districts that levy, the permanent rate levy. So it's based on what that permanent rate levy is and their percentage of that permanent rate levy. That typically is the city, uh, the county, the school district, and maybe the fire district, depending on what your percentages are. So that maximum indebtedness, um, is also a pretty hard and fast limit um, and can only be increased if your partner agencies, taxing districts are on board with what you're wanting to do. This map shows urban renewal.
Hey, Elaine, I, I need to, hey, Elaine, I, this is Barry Keever. I need to interrupt. I got a question. I, I kind of got lost on your graphs. So if the taxing, so two taxing districts, the, we get a frozen base, so taxes are froze. They're, they're not going to be an increase, correct?
No, taxes aren't frozen. The thing that's frozen is the amount that the taxing, all of the different taxing districts get out of that area. The property owner continues paying his or her taxes, but that increase in taxes over the life of the area goes to the urban renewal agency. So the property taxpayer doesn't really see any difference. They keep paying their taxes. It's just that when the assessor gets that money, it's divided differently. So all of the taxing districts keep getting their money off of that original value, and any growth over that timeframe goes to the urban renewal agency.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep, of course. And, uh, anybody feel free, I can't, I only have some thumbnails over of you, so feel free to interrupt me at any time. That doesn't bother me.
So I, I do have a question about this. As far as when the the taxing district is over, the, the, the urban renewal agreement is over. Any increased value, obviously, the, the county or whoever collects the taxes directly benefits after that. Correct?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And, and hopefully your urban renewal area has been able to create or cause new development that wouldn't have happened if you weren't able to do the projects within the area. That is really how urban renewal works. You put in, and, and this plan would uh, potentially very much be that kind of plan where you put in infrastructure that provides incentives for development to happen. And once that development happens, it, it may um, or, or most likely would not have happened unless you had those projects completed, and you don't have other funding sources for those projects. So urban renewal provides that funding source. So this is a little, uh, hard to see. I don't know if you're looking up at a screen or if you have individual computers, but you have two existing urban renewal areas. You have your um, central urban renewal district, which is in, in the central area of your city. I helped create that. I think that was one of the very first projects I did in my consulting, so way back in early two thousands. And then you have the west urban renewal district that's shown in purple. Um, and you, okay, and so the, the central district is shown in the turquoise color. And you can see it's right off the I five interchange, and, um, so it looks kind of like a T. The purple district is to the west of your central district. The district, um, that potentially may be formed is shown above in the yellow, and I'll have a zoom in of that on the next map. So in terms of that limitation for, um, assessed value and um, acreage, we, we'll, we, we are just starting the financial analysis, so we'll be able to give the input on the assessed value limitation soon. On the acreage, um, it is well below your twenty-five percent limitation, so, uh, you'll be fine on that if you do decide to create this area. So this just shows the area um, a little better, and you can see it in yellow, so it goes down here along Front Street. Um, these properties, that front, Front Street, up this area, kind of up here, up to these properties, up to this. Can you see where my cursor is? I think I have to move it over.
Yes.
Oh, you could, you could see it?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
When you move it back.
Then through here, um, these properties, and up here, up to the properties, um, that are, some are being developed up by the hotel. It also then, uh, has a little right-of-way cherry stem that comes down and takes in this property. Those arrows, um, I'm going to go through potential projects in a minute, and then we'll come back and look at those arrows that will show you where those projects might be located. So it's a fairly small area and fairly concentrated in terms of the potential projects. Question?
I, I was just gonna say, can we also point out that that is northeast Front Street, because there are two Front Streets.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, one, it's southeast Front Street is directly across the freeway, just so that people are clear.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
These are the potential projects, and I'll go back to the map so that you can look at them in just a second. So extend Boardman Avenue to Olson to improve northeast Front Street, um, to pave, put in curb gutter sidewalk lights, to develop city-owned lots on northeast Front Street, to encourage development of the cemetery-owned property, to install a traffic device at North Main Street and Boardman Avenue, um, encourage the development of a new hotel, and set up an economic development toolkit to provide incentives for development of properties within the area. So if we go back here, we're talking about improving northeast Front Street, extending, um, let's see, it's down here.
Or down there?
That should be down here. Extending, um, this street over, and then traffic control devices, um, here and here. And then along here, yeah, Karen, jump in along here, um, developing any city-owned property.
Elaine, yes.
The purple is what the traffic lights, that's what I was thinking.
What are you saying? You got two going next year, Bill? So I'll say.
No, I can't see your cursor either.
Uh.
There it is.
Okay, there it is. I, I have it up on two screens, and I'm sorry, I forget to move.
Yeah, yes. There's a little one that's gone on the other side.
Yeah, this is northeast front, and this should be down connecting here, and then, um, potential traffic control at these two, and then development of any city-owned property along, um, along Front. These projects are our initial list. We will refine these once we complete this analysis, which is something that we'll be doing in the next week, which is looking at the total assessed value within this area and projected development that is slated to occur, and looking at potential maximum indebtedness over, we, we'll look initially at a twenty, twenty-five, and thirty-year timeframe to be able to review with staff to see what kinds of projects um, those costs would cover, and then compare those to the projected costs of these projects. So that, that is the next phase of our analysis, is to do that financial look to see both how long we think an area should go and what projects could be accomplished within that area. So we will come back with this kind of a chart to be able to share, um, share with you. The process of approval of an urban renewal plan is that, um, we, we are trying to get this adopted by, uh, by the end of September, have, by September fifth, so that it goes into effect, um. It needs to go into, uh, that September fifth, take me wrong. It needs to go into effect before the first of October, because that's when the tax assessor, uh, certifies the new tax rule. And staff is wanting to try to get this adopted before some of the new development that is occurring goes on the tax rule so that the proceeds from that development can be used in your urban renewal area. To be able to do that, we would be bringing a draft plan and report to your urban renewal agency meeting in July, July eleventh, and going out for a consultant confer period with the taxing districts. Since your last plan was adopted, there is a forty-five-day requirement, uh, put into the statute in terms of notifying all taxing districts and seeing if they want a briefing to inform them about the plan. A planning commission meeting on July nineteenth to brief them on the conformance of the plan to your comprehensive plan. There is a finding in the ordinance that adopts an urban renewal plan that the plan conforms to the comprehensive plan, and so we asked the planning commission to do that review and provide that finding. We would brief your county commission. That briefing is also required in the month of August. And I think that first city council hearing, um, it is probably also August, and the second meeting would be that September fifth date. I think I've got the, the timing wrong on that. Because you're, it's adopted by a non-emergency ordinance, and the non-emergency ordinance has thirty days before it goes into effect, and you want this adopted prior to the second week of October. So, um, so you're, it, it has, I think you have to have two readings for a non-emergency ordinance, so we have to have uh, two, two meetings, and, and hear the ordinance at that September fifth meeting and vote there. So it's a fairly, fairly, uh, quick timeline. So as this comes to the agency, so just thinking about what would happen on July eleventh at an agency meeting, uh, the role of that agency at that point is to determine whether the plan uh, fits what you're wanting to do within the area, and whether you should send it out for the taxing districts to review, for the planning commission to review for conformance to your comprehensive plan, to do the county briefing, and then to have a city council hearing and vote. Um, so that would be the next briefing time. We'll be working with staff um, pretty intensely between now and then. So if you want any, any update, uh, on on that information, I'm sure that we could put together a memorandum, especially on the financial information that you would receive before that July date, so that you have an idea of uh, what that financial forecast is. And then we have questions, and I'll leave this up just a minute in case anybody wants to go back to a map or to anything else.
The only thing I have a question, but we, is our traffic setting telling us that we need another traffic control device? Is that what the purpose of that other purple arrow was? Because that would be the first time I've heard of it.
That was, that's what I was gonna ask.
I think, you, here, you don't, this is a twenty-year plan, so you don't, I don't have to know what I'm gonna do today. I have to have a plot, a twenty-year plan. So maybe in twenty years, you're gonna want another device there. And you put things in this that that you want, but you may never accomplish. You know what I'm saying? This is, this is planning.
Well, I get that. We talked about everything other than that one purple arrow.
You know, and I, I might have inadvertently put, put. You know, and I, I might have inadvertently put, put that in and I, I might have inadvertently put two in there. I was doing that right before the meeting as, as you were doing your agency meeting, trying to identify lots, so. I, it looks like maybe I have an extra arrow in there.
And, and, and you know, when I was talking to Karen, it's like, it's probably not a bad place. I mean, a traffic report, we have a lot of traffic down there and if that's what we're planning, that I, I have no problem with that. I was just asking a question. Yeah. So, so, so if I'm in a little hub there, I, I think that might be.
No, I think it was my mistake.
Yeah, we're, we're, right now, the traffic study doesn't indicate that there's a need, although we need to be thinking.
Well, absolutely, because that's especially with those housing down that road.
So right now, there's only going to be, uh, uh, right now, there's only a plan for. A desire to have at Boardman and Main Street.
Yeah, this one. And I'm not, I, I don't know why I put that other arrow. I, I, I think I was just working quickly while you were having your agency meeting. Because I had told folks that I tried to put arrows on the map, so that's what happens when you work quickly.
Is this, uh, we're just the public or the, the landlords and so forth participate in these decisions?
Uh, I'm not sure when that would happen. I mean, I think so, really, there, there really wouldn't be any. Participation, correct me if I'm wrong, Elaine, but the, the, the property owners don't necessarily get involved. It's going to be the taxing districts to get involved.
That the impact is on the taxing districts. Everybody receives notice of that city council hearing. You're, you have to send the notice of that hearing to either property owners, utility customers, postal patrons. Or voters, you have to pick one of those four groups. So it would seem like the owners within that area. Would receive notice from that. You. They are not negatively impacted by an urban renewal area. It just gives them potential tools. And potential improvements within the area. So ti- typically you do not see anybody opposed. Uh, who's a property owner within the area. It just gives them additional tools to help develop property.
Okay, so my question is, so the, the citizens' taxes stay the same, that's correct, right?
Correct.
And now, let's say for example, a taxing district, I'm just thinking because I, I deal with the fire department. If the fire department was in an earl, urban renewal agency. How does that affect that taxing entity? They, they get. They freeze at a percentage of what they get?
So, so that their taxes are froze at what, at what point that the, the urban renewal goes to effect. So the taxing rate at, at that time is when, that, that's when that district's taxes freeze. So they don't, they stay at that rate and they'll never get a percentage increase until the urban renewal is, uh.
For that area, correct. And so if their rate increases, then the. Potential money that is generated goes to the urban renewal agency, right?
Improvements down the road. Go ahead, Elaine.
Yeah, and i- if they do, I don't know if your fire district does a local option levy. If they do a local option levy, urban renewal does not take any of that money. If they do a permanent rate increase. Um, and, and then it would take some of that. Urban renewal only functions off permanent rates. So if they do a general obligation bond or a local option levy, urban renewal doesn't take any of those funds.
Since we only have two citizens here, does that answer your question, Mr. Dawkins?
I can understand, uh, we've gone through urban renewal before in some of these same areas. And, um. But then we had a decline in our values. And that green spot was not there. It was gone. And we ended up with, uh, having support the money. From the, uh, the work that was done, which is more on Front Street. And that was all within urban world. We, we ended up paying that on non-faustian. Because the economy went. To, you know, you can't foresee everything.
I, I think that was a LID. Yes, and that's how we, that's when they couldn't pay their part of that LID, then it became the city had to. Uh, get the money and then that's how we have, that's how we own those lots. Along there. But it wasn't an urban renewal agency. It was the, was, uh, local improvement district.
Which these two, these two programs are different, quite a bit different.
I think, I think that where the taxes are frozen. Like you say, it only, it really only affects the districts. Your, your taxes are going to be the very same. The only thing is in your breakdown of the taxes, you will see where it will say a certain amount goes to urban renewal. East or west or central or north, you know, but, but you're still going to, you're going to pay the same, it's just where it goes.
And the urban renewal is to keep the standards of streets and the.
Yeah, so we can, we can extend the streets, we can, uh, as, as she showed, we were going to try to extend Boardman Avenue all the way to Olson. We put in infrastructure, sewer water, that type of stuff.
And they won't, and the taxes, the people that are. Uh, benefit from that don't have their taxes decreased.
Correct.
Well, then hopefully that by, you know, if we put in some infrastructure or something similar to that, then when that. That they build, because there's, we don't want to do like you're saying about the LID and go put a lot of money in the dirt. And then have no, nothing happen. I mean, this is monitored, I would think, better than that. I mean. You're just not, I mean, because nothing says you have to spend this money either. I mean, like you say, if you don't get a developer that wants to. Develop or, you know, play. Yeah, it, it's strictly that. But it does, we, we've done, we've had some really great success over on this side of the freeway. And so you see that they're starting to develop more on the north side, so we thought, well. Maybe it would be time that if we city had the ability to help a little bit, this would be a good venue to do that.
Thank you. Are there any other counselors that have questions? Do you have anything else, Elaine?
No, I just want to reiterate what Karen said because it's a really important point. And that is that if, if you all go home and look at your property tax bill. You'll see a line item on there or maybe two if they do one for each urban renewal area that says urban renewal and amount that goes to that. So it is the way unfortunately, once measures five, forty-seven and fifty passed, that the assessors have to. Show how they put together the money for urban renewal, but as. As, as council member Pedagru, now that, she, she has her different hat, says. If the urban renewal areas went away, you'd still be paying that amount of taxes. It would just be distributed to the other taxing districts. So the total amount is the same for any property taxpayer. It's just that it gets allocated differently. Based on when the urban renewal area is formed and how much value has increased within that specific urban renewal. Area and the assessor has to calculate that for each separate urban renewal area. Um, every time they prepare property tax bills.
So I don't know, Elaine, if this question is even something. Do you happen to know, uh, what our current percentage of acreage or exact value is? Since you mentioned it, it would be less than twenty-five percent maximum.
I do, um, I'm trying to get this.
And then my second question is, do you recall when the other two urban renewal districts come off the urban renewal? Program?
I don't know that information, but we can get that to you and unless. Counsel Pedagru might know, but right now you have available acreage. To put in urban renewal of seven hundred and nine point eight acres. And let me get my calculator. And you have three hundred and twenty-six point one acres in urban renewal. So. Let me. You right now have eleven percent in a, a, a renewal acreage. And I don't have the assessed value, but that's something that I can also find and it can be sent out to you. So you have the capacity to put three hundred and eighty-three acres into urban renewal. And the, um, potential area that has been identified is one hundred and one, eighty-one acres. So you would still have potentially two hundred other acres that could be put into urban renewal after this was formed.
Thank you.
All right, we'd like to thank you, Elaine, for your information.
Yes, and I will update the timeline with the schedule for the city council meeting for you. So, so that that is correct and we can look at the assessed value in urban renewal right now and get that out to you also.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Bye.
Bye. All right, we're at the point for a public comment. Would either of you like to have a public comment?
No, thank you very much for.
Yeah, if there were more people, I'd probably said you're out of luck, but since we only have two people here, I, I figured it would have. It's not going to hurt anything, but I'm glad you were able to get your question somewhat answered.
Yeah, I didn't know this was going on tonight and I, I, I am, uh, just my memory is thinking about. Uh, development and, and that's what I've done here all my life and I just like to be a part of, uh, part of it. Understand it.
Well, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we'll go to ordinance, uh, one dash twenty-two-three. Mr. Mayor, did you want to ask any of you in mind? Well, I figured they had to raise their hand, but, um, Cory usually gives some kind of public comment, but. You have that? She is, but I don't. Oh, she has it there. I don't hear anybody. All right, you're, you almost got bypassed there, Cory.
Yes, sorry for my delay in getting my packet to you guys tonight. And the only thing I would like to remind you is that parade entries are about to be cut off here. Um, in a couple, in another week or two. And coming up in the third Wednesday of June is our June luncheon. It's going to be a, a business round table discussion. So if you're interested in sharing anything. Um, please get registered at our website to participate and get on, on our catering list so we can. Uh, provide accurate catering numbers to help cover costs. So anyways, that's all I have really. And, uh, thank you. I appreciate the urban renewal one-on-one. That's kind of working with some projects that I'm working with on the B C D A side of things as well. So great presentation. Thank you.
Hey, Cory, I got a question for you. So at the Sage Center, are you guys putting in additional charging stations? That kind of looks like what you're building.
Yes, we are. That is the extending the electric highway from Hood River all the way to Boardman. Those are going to be, um, universal chargers, uh, for all other vehicles. Um, and then the Tesla stations are also going to be, continue to be, um, available there as well. And, um, if anybody hasn't heard, this week the Sage Center is closed down for construction for moving utility lines. So the chamber staff is working remote or been relocated to the port tomorrow. So we're sorry if we have a delay in getting back to somebody, um, due to kind of changing the staff, so.
Do you have a timeline on when those charging stations are expected to be completed?
We are waiting for a few inspections to be finalized and then the final installation, the team should be. Coming back out on site to do the final install. They, uh, project that we done by the, probably next week.
Oh, super cool. That, I saw those when I was down there this week, or last week, so.
Yep.
Good job.
Thanks.
Any other people, any other individuals would like to have public comment? All right, having hearing done, we'll go to our action items. Ordinance one dash twenty-three homeless camping. And before we do, uh, start that, we need to, uh. Have a motion. Mr. Mayor, did you want me to give a, a quick staff report?
Not yet. Well, I'm not the mayor.
Well, should we do, this will just, I, I'm just going to outline why, why you have this ordinance before you. And then if you choose to, uh, make a motion, then we could discuss it.
Okay, why don't we, we, why don't we do that and, uh, you can give background. I guess this would be a background story, history. Yeah, I'm just trying to, uh, lay the groundwork. Okay, sorry.
Uh, as you're aware, uh, this has been going on for a couple of years now, uh, Oregon House Bill thirty-one fifteen. Was developed to deal with homeless issues and it dealt with, uh, Boise v. Martin. And Blake versus Grant's pass where, um, they were removed, those people were removed from public properties. Because they were campy in violation of, uh, their ordinance. Um, Oregon House Bill thirty-one fifteen requires that, uh, we provide. Them an alternative, uh, uh, so that they have a place that they can get services and shelter and so on and so forth. In order for us to enforce. The camping and the homeless, uh, activities that are going on, we have to have an ordinance in place. Uh, the ordinance before you have been, uh, developed, uh, it's gone through multiple cities. Uh, League of Oregon City has been involved, a lot of, uh, uh, courts, a lot of attorneys trying to define this. Uh, as we explained to you in, in a previous meeting that we're working with. Yumitala County and several cities there with the stepping stones. Stepping stones to, uh, to provide those services. So once we have this ordinance in effect. We've got the I G A with, uh, those entities. We can, uh, help these folks that need shelter and, and services by taking them to. Stepping stones, so take them to services.
So this, uh, this ordinance is in direct, uh, response to the camping built in Yumitala County. This, because it has a place, they now have a place to go if they're not on streets and it's a.
This ordinance is designed to, if they, if somebody wanted to come and put a, a tent up on City Center Circle and start living there, they can. Because we don't have an ordinance system that can't do that. By creating this ordinance, we can say you can't do that. If we say you can't do that, we have to make sure that you have the ability to receive services. Such as shelter, water, food, uh, mental health. That's what I mean. So since they're building that camp in Yumitala County, we can now do this ordinance.
Because you can't tell them they can't camp there unless we have a place to put them. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correct? Because that's.
Well, I, I don't know that I would use that, that verbiage, but, um, in order for us to enforce the camping. The homeless camping, we have to have an ordinance in place. The, the stepping stones. Is our alternative. Because we have an alternative, we can create an ordinance. That says we can provide them those services. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it just basically said the same thing I thought it said.
I think, I think the way I understood it is if that wasn't an option. But they were camping somewhere where it was.
but they were camping somewhere where it was deemed unsafe, that they would help them to find a different location that was safer. Where they maybe do have access to water.
I, yeah, I mean, we, I mean, I
So with or without the stepping stones, we would need the ordinance.
Right, if we didn't want them to do that, but we don't want to do that unless we have a place to put them. But you you need to create an ordinance where you're going to have people camping on City Center. Correct. Well, I get that, but do I? Are we having that problem right now? Well, not right now. As of July one, when
Everybody has that.
When the House Bill thirty-one fifteen goes into effect. Correct. We can't do anything about it if we don't have an ordinance in place to stop it. And then we have to provide them literal services. So July first is promoting us to do this?
Yes. I believe that goes for any public
Public properties. And if you read through the actual
Other public entities.
And if any, any, any agency, any, any organization that within the city limits of Boardman will be covered by our ordinance. If they get outside of the city limits, then they're not covered. So that would be a county issue or maybe the board.
My understanding is is like a lot of people were notified or maybe caught off guard and didn't realize that they needed to have something in place. And now they're starting to quickly because there's a short timeframe on this.
I I would tell you that this is probably not a short timeline, but everything needed to be vetted before the courts, attorneys, and come up with an ordinance that doesn't violate the constitutional rights. So that's why it's coming down boiling down to just a month or two before having a an ordinance. Now, if we find that in this ordinance, something is not working, we may have to address that, but we can address that at that time. So stepping stone was kind of reactionary to July first to be able to institute something for these people to be able to go to. So when this ordinance came or when this law came in and cities started saying, we're not going to allow you to be here, we at least have a place to put them. Because isn't that what the Yumitilla Morrow stepping stones has been formed and has been providing the service for a while? I'm not sure how many years, but they've been doing some of your design. This is an option for the city of Boardman to enter into an I G A with stepping stones or the the communities from the that that developed this project. It gives us a route that we can get people services they potentially And that place is going to be an homeless center. It's good, correct? So it'd be actually, I don't know, O line, I believe. Oh, is it on O line? It'll be in Yumitilla County, closer to Yumitilla, if I'm not mistaken.
Carolina. Carolina.
I think it might be. Carla, do you know?
Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, so it is actually on the corner of Lind and Bensel Road. We went through a process in the city of Yumitilla to annex the property. The property is owned by Yumitilla County. It will be leased to the city of Yumitilla. Yumitilla, the city of Yumitilla is the lead agency for the five, four communities and county and West Yumitilla County that are make up what is called Project Path. Project Path is what the pilot is that was funded with funds from the kind of the companion bill to thirty-one fifteen. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, forty-one, something from the same year. Stepping Stones is the contractor. They're providing the suite of services. But but you need to understand the suite of services that Stepping Stones is providing is not the full requirement that Project Path has to meet. There's there's a lot to this process and the the ordinance that you're being asked to look at tonight and and give, I think, really full consideration of is is a Boardman approach to help manage what could be coming, you know, after the first of July. I mean, you we watch what's been going on in Portland, and I think it's concerning. And as as we see, you know, with state policy, how we're not moving people out of homelessness, we're just trying to find other places to house them and provide them services. What this does is gives Boardman the opportunity to manage what happens on public property and how that how that functions relative to when folks arrive in Boardman or when our own own citizens find themselves in a tough place and they're living out of their car or couch surfing isn't working anymore. What are our options? And this just gives us a a management opportunity. It's not going to solve the problem. And, you know, I'm I'm a realist here. I'm not sure Project Path is going to fully solve the problem. But it does provide an opportunity for people to enter into temporary housing and hopefully into then transitional housing and move them to permanent housing. The folks have to want to make those steps. Maybe I've said too much, but I'm happy to answer any questions also.
Thank you.
And that's the importance of all the definitions, right, that we're looking at with camp camping and website and then, excuse me, yes, site. And then also the things about the timeline and how long some of you have these places. And I agree with the importance of kind of finding what people can be at or where they can be at on all their properties, probably prehended. It feels like that's kind of the important note out of all of this is that in addition to that when people are in those places and in those situations, then we can start the analysis of helping get a part of this.
All right, so we need a motion in order to proceed or not proceed as far as ordinance one dash twenty twenty-three.
I move to approve ordinance one dash twenty twenty-three in its entirety and ordinance amending the city of Boardman Municipal Code created Title Nine, Chapter nine point four two Camping Activities on City-Owned Public Property for those experiencing homelessness.
Second, so I motion in a second. Is there any discussion we'd like to have? I think we kind of already had that. Yes.
So is regulating camping locations? Is that like the Marina Park or?
Designated camping area. So the Marina Island Belt or after it was directed with places that are in lights are slated for.
And so it would be any city property that they would give up to camp on, every city property, even unless it says all three properties.
Any other discussion? All right, having hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Jackie.
Great. City of Boardman Ordinance one twenty twenty-three, ordinance amending the city of Boardman Municipal Code creating Title Nine, Chapter nine point four two Camping Activities on City-Owned Public Property for the for those experiencing homelessness. Whereas the city of Boardman desires to allow individuals and families that are temporarily experiencing the effects of homelessness to camp in relatively safe and sanitary locations while they are actively seeking access to stable and affordable housing. Consistent with Oregon House Bill thirty-one fifteen twenty twenty-one, Martin versus Boise, Lake versus Grant's pass and other legal standards at the time of adoption and whereas the city desires to establish codes related to camping in the city to allow for legal camping during reasonable time periods while protecting sensitive areas of the city that are disproportionate disproportionately impacted by the negative effects of such activity. And whereas the city desires to discourage camping in areas where such activities fundamentally undermine the public stability to use the city-owned public property for limited purposes and create unsafe and unsanitary living conditions which can threaten the general health, welfare, and safety of the city and its inhabitants. And whereas the city encourages the active participation of all concerned persons, organizations, businesses, and public agencies to work in partnership with the city and the homeless community to address the short and long-term impacts of homelessness in the community. Now, therefore, the people of Boardman do ordain as follows. Section one, Title Nine, Chapter nine point four two of the Boardman Municipal Municipal Code is hereby created as a written as written in Exhibit A attached hereto and hereby incorporated by reference. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate distinct and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions hereup. Section three, this ordinance is necessary for the immediate protection of the public health, safety, and general welfare. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be effective upon the date of its adoption after being read by title at two meetings of the council.
All right, thank you. So we're able to move on to our resolutions. We'll move on to resolution nine dash twenty twenty-three, rest in peace S R O grant. So before you have resolution, so anytime we receive unanticipated revenue or grant funds, the money has to be brought into the budget and then we can expend it. This resolution allows us to bring the press funds that were received from the credit board to the lease department for the S R O, a portion of the payroll wage, and for body camera, including software and the other upgrades that go with those. So I would ask that you approve Resolution nine that twenty twenty-three.
I move to approve Resolution number nine dash twenty twenty-three, resuming to accept the Columbia Enterprise Zone two grants supported this program. Hold a second.
Okay, you have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I have a discussion. This is just to receive the grants. This is not paying for the S R O. This is only this is just to receive is this granted? The grant from the enterprise zone doesn't pay the complete cost of the S R O now. No, it covers a portion. It's split between the city, the school district, and the monies that we receive. And this is the enterprise zone money that we use to help offset that cost. And I knew that. I just I just I know this isn't the right place, but I I just think that foolishly needs to pay for their own S R O. That's my personal opinion. I don't think it's working as well as it should, being able to split it, but that's another kind of this conversation. And that's not what this is for. This is to accept the money for the Columbia Enterprise Zone to be able to use that money for the S R O to help pay for that. So any other discussion? So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so Resolution nine twenty twenty-three passes. So we did ten dash twenty twenty-three because I always get out of order on that, but we have to do eleven twenty twenty-three, make sure that we do that part of it. Who didn't do that one? So I need a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, we approve Resolution, Resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty-three, Order Resolution to impose categorized taxes for the twenty twenty-three, one point four fifth year at the rate of four point two one one four for one thousand of assessed value and to let impact this bond indebtedness of one million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one not subject measured by or measured if you want to switch.
Okay, so I have a motion and you got a setting there, Brenda? Brenda has a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-three state shared revenues.
So I move to approve Resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty-three, Resolution declaring to these elections to see state share.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty-three custodial treasurer.
I have to approve Resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three, our Resolution funding the oral county treasurer as custodial officer of the city of twelve.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll head down to other business. We have twenty twenty-one audit report.
We didn't even, we are talking about the actual audit itself. We just said that it was huge.
Okay, so you should have had the letter and the packet when you see from the auditor. I want to point out this in the twenty twenty-one audit that we've been waiting for for quite a long period of time. And I probably should refer to Councilor Pettigrew to maybe discuss the report. She will have more of the answers than I do as she's the city manager, so.
I'd like to add that the whole, the city applied and received the grant for the broadband money that we spent. Then the B C D A implemented the program and hired the people and that's when COVID was going on and we were doing the hotspots and getting the emergency out well. Then, when the auditor came, they said, well, you know, that the city, we should have been the one that was doing the program. So they said we should have paid prevailing wage. So B C D A, we worked with Foley and B C D A paid the prevailing wage difference that the employees, you know, didn't get. And and because of that, there was a long delay from our auditor and finishing our audit report. So that's that is part of what the problem was that caused that delay. They there would so that's how that worked.
Any other questions about twenty twenty-one audit report?
We're really happy that it's done.
I would say so. And it is probably to point out that we do have a different auditing company now. And is moves a little faster. There you go. I can say that. Or I will say that. Whether I can or not, I said it. All right, so I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-one audit as prepared by Converne and the Clunsock LLC.
A motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll go to our next other business, liquor license request. Dollar General. Mr. Mayor? Yes, attached to your packet is a request on Dollar General to receive a ten off-premise license to sell here in line. Off-premise means
Off-premise means, obviously, there's been a lot of confusion about this, but off-premise means that they can sell it at their store and then that person can leave. They can't consume it while they're sitting there in the store, so we have several retail businesses that have off-premise licenses. They are requesting license to for the sale of beer in line. Again, I can't find anything or any reason to recommend the denial. It is a formal request through the Liquor Control Commission, they have to apply for it for me. My, my recommendation would be to approve, and if you do choose to approve, if you would give me the authority to sign that permit to give back to law CC.
So we just remember that in the motion. If we build that route. So I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we approve Dollar General's off-premise liquor license.
And?
And
authorize.
Authorize the city manager, Pro Tem, right, is that right, to sign that license today.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have a motion in a second, is there any other discussion?
I just wanted to point out that, you know, how would you explain an off-premise license, there was some confusion on what kind of license this is, and this is a pretty standard license that any store storefront can apply for, including, I believe, the one that ordinance has, it's a little bit different, there's about, I believe, five or six of them. You know, there was some confusion on whether or not I would approve it, and I already knew that this was a standard license that. So anyways, I just wanted to make note of that.
Any other discussion or input? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so.
Second to that one.
Brenda?
Alright, thank you.
And so Chief, so I always tell you, Chief, it's just gonna be the chief, but please, she said right there, but city manager, would you, you now have permission to sign that, okay, we'll get it, they're anxious to get it.
Yes, they started a year ago and then for some reason, something, I'm gonna tell you, like, I'm pretty standard. Yeah, yeah, it, it, it is, so anyway, they'll be excited to get that process. Thank you.
City manager, Soko, city manager recruitment.
So I, I, it's part of my report to you, so I guess I'll all send it, about this time, I, I asked Chief Dieter, he, for doing the background investigation on our applicant. They did diligently for a couple weeks, they traveled all over the state of Oregon, and did their due diligence, spent a lot of time talking to people, I'm excited to say that he told me that, that, that they are complete with that background and they have the insurance, so before you, but before the mayor, is a contract that has been reviewed by the council. I would ask that the mayor sign that contract and then I'll have Mr. Hammond sign it when he's in town, and we back to August first, Mr. Hammond, if you're the city manager.
Alright, I'll be signing this.
Thank you.
Well, will we be taking action in the future reading on this, or what are we gonna do about this?
For what?
On the contract.
We will actually be taking it just that, because we already.
We, I, I thought we usually make a first and a second and say the contract, the term, who who gives the signature and the dollar, I thought we'd, by standard, we do that.
We'll, we'll, we'll do.
We'll look into it.
But I believe so. We need to do that. It's a, it's an appointment contract, so.
This didn't, we already choose as a council?
Well, just want to make sure we're covering all our bases and we can look in that for the next meeting, we got time, sorry.
Okay.
I know Marcus starts to move well, but whatever, we got time.
The, the, the mayor has the authority to enter into a contract on behalf of the city council as well. This is the same contract that you reviewed, and
We did.
Told me to move forward with the negotiations, so we took care of that.
I just thought there was a common piece at the end. I think there is, I think I do.
We were.
From last October.
Okay, so she'll fight out, and then we'll, if we need to, then we can bring that up next week. A W S beautification.
So I was requested by County Rockwell to put this on the agenda, so why will differ to him?
So, my, my only question is that I did discuss a little bit with Chief Soko, because I am new, and, but you know, there's obviously been some discussion about the big gray buildings and how they look from the freeway and of course, the city, and so, one of my biggest things when I got involved with city politics was beautification, and so I always felt that that was very important to me. It's been important with my family, I could go into large details later on, but the point is, is that I think it's a perfect opportunity with at least one of those buildings that we may consider asking A W S if they would be interested in painting one side of that building. And how we decide that, I think that's something that we could maybe get city people involved with or whatever, and I, I do understand that we have trees that are going to grow over the course of years to eventually cover up some of this, but I have talked to other people from other towns that I know that have similar buildings, Facebook, Google, Apple, and in some of those locations, they do paint murals on them. And, you know, where my family's from, the murals are kind of a big deal, you know, if you've ever been to Toppenish, or, you know, where my family's from is the next town over, and that's City of Murals, everybody knows that. And there's a mural on every single building, and when we used to own a hardware store, I, I can't remember for sure who painted it, but they, they painted the mural on the side of the, the building that we owned, or the, the one next to us, and then I believe Julie Casey painted the one on the library, no, so. Point is, somebody, somebody painted them, I think that's a big deal, I, I believe that encourages people to come to our town, you know, skip an identity, instead of just what we see from the, from the freeway. We already know, but most people, when I see them in the store, the first thing that they ask is, what are those buildings? And I answer that question at least ten times a day. And so, and I just tell them, hey, that's what they are, whatever, and I think it would be better for me to just say, they probably wouldn't ask if there was something on there, that's all I'm saying. They would say, man, that's really nice, you know, maybe that's something we can do in our town as far as a mural or, or something. I mean, the way I envision it is a big thing that says City of Boardman on it, you know, and maybe our logo or the Columbia River, something that, that I don't know, dignifies our town, I don't even know if that's the right word, but the point is, I think it's a perfect opportunity to at least ask. Worst case scenario, they say no, they're not doing anything now anyways, so if they say no, we move on, and then we just let the trees grow, but if they entertain the idea, I think that's something that we should at least consider.
Do we have any ordinances or anything on the books about anything on these ones?
So, no, not specifically. I'm trying to figure out how to answer your concern, I believe discussions have been had with even, as I explained to you earlier, that they are doing things to put in greenery, trees, some other options, I, I would tell you that I think trying to find a mural that everybody would agree with might be a, a challenge.
But I think we could at least, you know, if we decided, you know, you had a contest, or, I mean, I, I've just thrown ideas out there, I think the biggest thing is just letting people know that we are interested in making sure that our, our town still stays beautiful, you know. I do talk to a lot of people throughout the day, and some of the things that we do discuss is talking about, you know, how Boardman was founded, and, you know, why the park looks the way there's, because we always get compliments on how it looks on that, and that specific area, and then I explained to him, like, you know, you know, Sam Boardman was the first state park director, and there's actually a state park named after him, and, you know, but you gotta go ways to get, so the point is, is I think keeping with that theme for our town, in my opinion, is important.
I, it's not my place to, to argue, but I just think you, what you consider art, somebody else considers trash, or so coming up with something that everybody in the community would agree on might be more of a challenge than what you anticipate. I, I, I believe there's probably room to talk to them in, in the fashion that we feel gray isn't good enough, that maybe we ask them to paint a solid color. That might be something that they do, I don't know, I, I wasn't part of that discussion, Karen, can you?
Do you?
I think, I mean, we can bring it back up to them, they want to do something, I think. In the end, we agreed we wouldn't do anything now until we got Southeast Front Street done, and they're always, you know, they always want to make us happy, so, but you, you have to have an idea, you know. Personally, gray's fine with me, so doesn't fade, doesn't look bad ten years from now, this is gray, so.
So, I, I understand what you're saying, and this is an opportunity to discuss it, I just think you, I mean, I, I, I get it, I just think hey, I've been here a little while too, and, and we do certain Christmas decorations, and those were those, those were taken out of context and bad, so trying to make everybody happy, a town of close to five thousand population coming up, so what's that happen medium, and, and what you consider art, and what does somebody else consider graffiti, or drunk, or I, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know those answers, I'm sure that, again, once we get Front Street, the Loop Road there done, and we get all that done, and they finish up construction, I'm sure there's room to have those discussed. But if you're gonna, if you, if you want to do murals and stuff, you don't have to, and they have to agree to it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I, I'm of the belief that you, you can at least, we can at least ask. Like you said, I'm uncomfortable with them saying no, but I feel like, you know, maybe ten years down the road, some, you know, maybe this discussion comes up and we should have asked ten years prior. And they may have agreed, we just don't know until we ask, that's all, that's all I'm coming, that's all I'm asking, so. What's hurt to ask, if, if they say no, or they say, you know what, at this point in time, we won't consider it, then we move on and we know our answer, that's it.
Thank you, Richard.
Thanks.
We all have our contacts. Couple of us have our contacts that we could easily reach out and talk to. Alright, please, yes, you may.
So I, I do appreciate the idea, I just want to say I do like to take my time and think about some of these things before I jump in and ask, so that when I, when we do go and ask, it's rather thoughtful, and we, it's not just sort of, we'd like to do something, you know. So I, for me at least, I'd like a little bit more time to process. And, and do that, I don't, I don't, I don't see a problem with just kind of asking and maybe getting more ideas and just being able to think about it, but I do think it would be good to just think about it, and one of the things Karen said, Councilor Pettigrew said was, you know, ten years on the road, what is that gonna look like, and so I'm just thinking longer term, what is it that we would want to see?
And the only thing I would add is, I think that some places have something on the books for developers, that they have to do so much green space, or so much of this kind of thing to their new construction or repair, so that the community continues to have some beautification elements. I, you know, I kind of laughingly, I remember a, a ground pit, had to have so much green space around it, because it was part of the ordinance. Ground pit didn't need green space for their business, but they had to do it for that area. And I think that there's room for us to consider that as well, that new businesses, especially if we're gonna do the serpent renewal and possibly have new businesses all along Front Street, it might be in our best interest to be thinking about what that would look like from all angles.
You know, and, and most of my discussion is based on just from traveling around, I mean, my position as a coach, I've been to probably every town in Oregon, and all of them look very similar except for Boardman, in my opinion. And part of that's because of the nature of how Boardman had to move, we don't really have any old buildings here. That is one of the things, you know, that comes up when I talk to people is where, where are your old buildings, like, wow, town moved, just not a lot of old buildings here, and so that's why it looks the way it does, there's no I mean, I'm an artist at heart, and there's no color coordination, in my opinion, when I look at my town, it looks like a little kid put Legos in just a bunch of random spots and said, here's your town. Again, my opinion, as a business owner and somebody that's lived here for a long time, you know, and so, but I can go to neighboring towns and, you know, look at Matilla and look at Hermiston, and they have a very significant amount of old buildings that look very similar, they're easy to decorate, they look very nice, everything's very coordinated, and then that's all I'm looking for, something where we can do something similar, and obviously, our town is different because of what I talked about from the past, so.
Well, we did have a discussion a number of years ago about differences between our town maybe and towns like Leavenworth, that have established a
Ordinance.
Well, they've established an ordinance, and then they've established sort of a tourism attraction, so that every business in their town, I think of a little town called Cami, Idaho, where every business is set up like an old western town, it's a state, it's a front, for sure, but the idea is that you're going there, you're experiencing that culture, that and the same for Leavenworth, or I'm trying to think of other places that are like it, but even little towns like Mitchell with only a hundred people living in it have big murals on the side of their buildings depicting their history, and while maybe that would be graffiti to some people, or maybe it's needs a lot of repair, overtime, you have to touch up your mural, I think of every town I've ever lived in has places where pockets of population have come together and they've depicted something that they want everybody to know about them, their culture, their background, they bring to that community. The size of half a tunnel going down into, oh, down to the bridge on Maple and Ash, getting back into Spokane County, or back in Spokane City. There's big murals there for people to look at that tell about the people who live there.
In hand, the people will come back and say, you know, they'll tell other people, hey, if you go to Boardman, you see, that, that's what I'm getting at.
Right, and little things like that.
I think that's a start.
I think the other thing is little things like that, we did some stuff like that, they know it's very microcosmic or whatever, but we had all the kids paint little things at Sam Boardman, and we posted them all over the entire school, these little placard, placard tiles, exactly, and you know, those kids that did that kind of work, they don't grow up and graffiti their work. They grow up and they protect that, and they don't let their friends graffiti their work, that's something they take pride in. So I think that we could look at something like that. But again, we probably need something on the books for businesses, if we don't already have something. Our development code covers landscaping for all types of projects important, including industrial, and they do meet their requirements, okay.
But it doesn't talk about painting their buildings.
No, it does talk about landscaping requirements and visual barriers and stuff, and they didn't meet that.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate the discussion at least.
It's good to hear that, we could percolate on that.
Alright, so we'll move to the lease report, Chief Dieter.
So you should have the monthly report in there, as you can see, May was probably our busiest month so far. So you should have the monthly report in there. Um, as you can see, uh, May was probably our busiest month so far. Almost five hundred, uh, total incidents. You know, the weather just keeps getting warmer. Uh, people are out and about. We've got lots of construction going on in town, as you know, um, our population grows, our, our, our calls grow, I know. I don't know that there's any way to, uh, increase population and decrease what happens in your city. So, uh, the only other thing I've got, uh, is I'm doing a review of our applications for the position we've had open since January. Uh, we currently have four. Uh, so, uh, they're all non-certified, so we'll be hopefully doing a, uh, panel. Uh, ORPA, which is our physical agility test, the written test and an interview panel hopefully this month. Um, and, um, we've got some pretty good applicants, um, younger. So, our, our departments getting kind of a little. It's not that it's a bad thing, but you know, we, we do need to get some young blood into the department so that we have those members of the department that are willing to come up through the ranks and take over some of the supervisory positions and or detective positions as, as, as our members decide to move on. As we know, Schimer's last day, it was Thursday. And so we are also still looking for an SRO position. Uh, we would be posting, um, that out as a certified only position. Um, looking for a lateral, um, in hopes that we can maybe lure some uh, lateral officer with already certified, maybe a little older, uh, to come over and take over as our COVID. And that's all I have is your question. Thank you very much.
You guys, thank you. Building Department report. Thanks, Matty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we went live in May with new software. Um, so now, um, our citizens are able to go online and apply for, pay for, pull permits all online. They have to load their plans, no more paper, which is a big deal around here. We have so much paper that we have to archive. A lot of it for ten years. So we're pretty excited. Still working on all the kinks, but we're getting there. All of our contractors have been very excited about it.
What makes their job a little easier?
Yes, everybody's job a lot easier. They can request inspections, they get results, write email to them. It's really neat. A neat system. Can I ask you something? Is there any way you can take the moral county permits sold and find out how many of them are in the nine, seven, eight, twenty, zero? Sure. Yeah, I could do another line item. Um, that's moral county and then just moral county nine, seven, eight, twenty. And then all else moral county, you'd be all the other answers. Okay, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? That works. Also attached to the package is the public forest department. Again, they're staying busy, uh, and we keep coming up with other projects we're working on, so, uh, they'll continue to stay busy. We also have a fellow that's retiring too from that position. Yes, I was gonna bring that up. Oh, I'm sorry. That's, that's, that's okay. You stole my thunder, so. I didn't, I didn't catch the re- replace the windsock I had, so I have to look that. Good, that probably need replaced. Looked pretty faded at one time. All right. So City Manager report. Uh, well, you touched on it. Uh, we had, uh, Kevin, uh, Kevin, you know, announces retirement, wanting to continue service through the city of Portland. Recognize him with a, a lunch and a cake and we opened the city hall for public to come in and participate. Uh, Kevin's not kind of the, the one that likes to be recognized and he doesn't like the spotlight, so, uh, he launched and then disappeared. Um, on the other hand, we had George, uh, Schimer, uh, who also was retiring after her ten years of service to the police department. Um, he stuck around and, and engaged in conversation, so, uh, both are gonna be missed. Uh, they're, they're great team members for the city. Um, we'll continue to have Kevin on staff for a while, um, because of the certifications for our water, wastewater that we need to have, um, somebody over our, our equipment. And we'll be doing an assessment center of some sort to select his replacement and then that person will train under him for about two months. Um, that should have, I was hoping to have it this week. We were a little short staff this week, so maybe next week we'll be able to select that person. Uh, we wish them well in their future endeavors. Comes with, uh, a lot of fun. Uh, I looked at some pictures of Kevin years ago and he definitely looks different than he does today. Well, with, uh, Officer Schimer, you, you, you might not go through as many cars. Yeah, well, you know, you might, you might have it going on the road, so.
We might have had a discussion about that during his, uh, his retirement plan.
I was wondering, I, I had school that day, so it's really hard for me to get out of school. Uh, a- as you can see, the, uh, building department expansion is coming right along. Uh, I just wanna remind everybody that, uh, that is, uh, funds from our building department. They are not taxpayer funds. Uh, funding that project, so, um, the expansion's going well. Uh, we hope to see it uh, done. I believe the completion is September of next year. January, 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 I'm thinking of something else. Um, I think that's the State Center. Um, so anyways, coming along, we're hoping to get it done. Uh, Karen's view diminished quite a bit. He gets to look at fly with. Um, I guess they thought she spent too much time watching them work, so they put a big fly with a finger over it.
They, they felt guilty.
Um, hopefully our generator will be online here pretty quick, so the city will now have a backup generator for the city hall, which is something that's been discussed for the twelve years I've been here or longer, so, um, we're looking forward to that. Uh, city hall will be closed. I mean, we will be out of power for an entire day. Uh, but they're working with us to try to do on the weekends, so that's disruption. Um, a lot of stuff going on. Uh, we're busy all the time. We're still working, trying to fine tune the audio visual system in council chambers. Uh, the tech's supposed to be here. Hopefully next week we will be able to, to finish everything up, so. Um, it is quite a, uh, enhancement to what we had before. Um, I've heard from people who can hear now, they can actually hear in the audience, but it also picks up better on the cam, so. Uh, I know you guys love the microphones, but it is what it is. You're in a public forum and your voice needs to be heard.
Mine's not the one that doesn't get heard.
I agree, actually, because, uh, you don't talk, you don't talk very loud sometimes.
You're kidding.
No, I'm dead serious. When you wanna be loud, you're loud, but for the most part, you're surely, you're not very loud. You're very quiet.
Christina is quiet, but I'll take your word for it.
Uh, and that soft spoken might be a better word. As you can see, uh, uh, there are several things in, in the, the report. That's just a small portion of what goes on. And it reaches the call, so, um, proud staff, they've all worked hard. We're looking forward to Mr. Hammond leaving here in August, uh, we'll have plenty for him to give. Any questions? If not, we're pushing our nine o'clock hour.
Yes, we are. We're always done.
Thank you very much. Counselor comments. Anyone have a counsel comment? Having hearing done, the only major, uh, the only mayor com- uh, comment I have, uh, is just a shout out for the fire department and, uh, it achieved, the fire department has moved to the new station. And from what I'm getting is the open house is gonna be fourth of July. So if you ever get a chance to go, take a look at what they got there, by all means do it. It is just cool. And it's gonna get, uh, a lot nicer as they get their landscaping and then. So to be able to see what your eighty seven dollars a year in taxes is gonna give you. Cause that's probably about all it's gonna cost you is less than a hundred bucks a year for that station. It's worth to go in there and just walking into the bays and seeing the enormity of what's there. It's just super cool. So if you get a chance, there's the fourth of July. Cause that's when it's gonna be open. Go down and look at, see what is there and, uh, it's really nice. It's gonna really benefit the firefighters in our area. And so it's just, I think the city of Portland's gonna be really proud of what was built there. And that's all I have to say.
Could I, could I ask for something? Um, we used to get a list at the bottom that would give us the upcoming events, sort of a little.
Yeah, I do that if we have room on one page. Um, if you're okay doing a two-page agenda, we can certainly do that. Sometimes it's just all I can do is squeeze it in.
I mean, you're up really quick. Next meeting, we have to put the next meeting on that right now. Now, Richard.
Yeah, let's discuss that since you're talking about fourth of July. Next month, we do fall on fourth of July. Should we reschedule that?
You know, so we, we need to, recommendation would be July eleventh.
I believe that's what I saw on the calendar was July eleven.
I can be here a little, I'll be back from my cruise by then.
You say July third, there's gonna be a very upset person in my family. Yeah, I have an anniversary.
Will be a little work for everybody. A little work for me.
And we'll just tell Heather where she has to be. Is she down here?
There's also a meeting greet tomorrow night with OBI at for elected official.
What's OBI?
Oregon Business Industry.
Where did that at?
It's being held at ordinance. It's a meeting greet. It was in your email.
I didn't see that.
And we didn't have it.
Maybe it was that ordinance I didn't look at, but what it was about.
I, I believe it's to talk to Oregon, the leaders of the working business industry, um, I don't know if they call themselves a coalition or what, but to talk to them as elected officials about what's happening in our area, but it's a meeting greet.
I guess I've missed that. So that's tomorrow.
I believe you have. It's on Thursday, Saturday. It's say eight from five thirty to seven. This is five thirty to six thirty. Lodge. I thought it was OBI that it might be. It's Oregon Business Industry, I think is what it's called.
So, uh, Mr. Karen, um, it's.
You were emailing that.
Oh, I'm sure if I, I was, I was sure it's on, just. So, uh, Karen, we probably should talk about having a special meeting to pass the, uh, ordinance, have a second meeting. We did not have a full form of the council. From when, from last week? No, tonight, for the homeless camping ordinance. I am not in favor of a special meeting. I'm just gonna tell you that right now. I'm just taking the special meetings. I, I get it.
Join us by Zoom then, because you, like we said, we have to have this done by July the first. And we have no choice. So, you know, it's another one of those ten minutes or
I'm gonna be a little stubborn on this too then, because by golly, we should have got this done earlier. And I don't mean to be sarcastic either.
Well.
But I'm, I'm just saying, I get that we, there's a lot to do, but.
So we have to have a full form in order?
No, but had we had a full form tonight and we had advertised it for a week, we could have had declared it was an emergency and read it twice tonight. But we don't have a full. So you can't do it twice.
But hey, are you looking to do it in?
And it's gotta be.
Well, any day you like.
It's gotta be before July first, right?
Yeah, so it's one of the third.
So my initial thought is, so if we don't pass it until the July eleventh meeting, we just can't enforce the camping on city properties until we pass it on July.
Everyone I asked, I said, what's upset? So what if we don't do it? And nobody replies. So, yeah.
I, I, I think that would be the only catch is we can't do anything with it until April. So that July one, if somebody pops up at ten, city hall. Are we anticipating people coming migrating this way? Is that what we're anticipating or fearing? I'm not thinking that's gonna happen right away, uh, but there is potential for it. Just something to think about.
Well, the city of Portland, Portland has started to, uh, remove people from their public property. Because they want their legal battle with the beds, so they just certainly need to go off their property. That was announced about.
And I, I will add though, down freeways. I, I did make a trek all the way down to Medford about a month or so ago, and I will tell you it's pretty bad down. Well, what I'm saying is, is that.
Odot doesn't have anything for them.
It's, I, I don't even think it's just Odot. It's everywhere.
Well, I'm just saying on Odot, that's at least from the various point of view, Odot has not kicked them off their property. So rather than going down a rabbit. So what are our options for this on, so? Let's put it this way. Let's say we don't have a special meeting and we go June, July eleventh. What has to happen July eleventh? We have to have another meet, where you have a second reading and then vote on it. Or you have a special meeting in June and have to have a full form. No, you just have to have another meeting, uh, as a week apart.
Yeah, at least a week apart and it has to be a majority vote. So you need at least four people.
So we need to have at least another majority vote before July first in order to pass the ordinance. Is that what you're saying? So, so we potentially schedule one for the twentieth, um, which I would envision being about a ten-minute meeting. Twentieth is.
You know. I, I wonder if we'll have a city county port name.
Well, there's, it's got some potential of having, uh, the county, I think it brought a, a potential having the city county port, maybe on the twenty first. Are we out of town?
If, if some, if enough of us came to make a quorum, it wouldn't be. Because it wouldn't be a special, I mean, we could, we, we went in the other room before.
I mean, if you, if you would allow me to be Zoom on the twentieth, I could be on the twentieth.
Yeah, cause this is only, I mean, this is like.
Could I be in Vegas that week?
We, oh, good for you.
I know. Now I'm gonna, I have to be away, yeah, I'm gonna be away for.
Well, just as long as there's a quorum here.
Well, I will show up on, and then on the twentieth, somebody, the council president will run the meeting, cause I refuse to run the meetings on. But I assume I think it's inappropriate. That's my personal, so the council president can run the meeting. I will be live from live from Las Vegas. So I, I could do that. I, 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 I just was venting a little bit because I was just venting and that will leave it as.
But I think the other big consideration, and this came up last year when the temperatures got in the triple digits. But there needed to be someone assigned to go around to the known homeless people and give them water and provide them a place where they could get out.
Thank you for coming.
So the library ended up opening its doors on days when they weren't open so that people could get in out of the weather and avoid the triple digits. So just from a purely health standpoint, we're not coming into the cooler days.
So what you're referring to is cooling stations and that was set up through, uh, work at the city, through the county to create a defining place to house a cooling station, but the library could go on that. But we didn't send somebody around to everybody and say, are you okay? If they need help, we provided them and if, if we saw them and they needed help, police department is good to. If they need help, we provided them and if, if we saw them and they needed help, police department was good to stay there.
And the librarian was good to go to their vehicles or go to, to them or she knew they were at and the ones who had given water and tell where the cooling station's located.
Right, that, that, that's, that's outside the city scope, so.
Sure. Seems to me. What's your choice, twentieth or wait till July eleventh?
I say twentieth. If we make twentieth work, I can make a work.
I, I can be here on the twentieth.
Well, just, just know that if you do that and we have a city county port meeting, you got two nights here, I am sorry.
I won't be in the city county, I will, I will be.
So when you say city county, you're talking city council?
City council, the county commissioner, the port commissioner. And I, I truly believe that's gonna be, I, 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 I wanna say the twenty first is what they're trying to shoot for. Um, and, and, and that, if that's the case, if, if we get a majority there, um. We could, we could actually go in a, a, in the spare room there.
I just don't, yeah, I just don't want to have since.
I agree with twenty first or the twenty.
You just tell me one day to be there and I'll be there.
Sounds like we should watch our email and if the twenty first gets confirmed, then maybe we can just all confirm that we can do it then. We just need to make sure that we get a response, we have it for it, you know, not really making council for a lot of this stuff.
And then we have a week's notice that we didn't prefer.
Well, we don't need to get it in the paper, we do need to have twenty-four hour notice, we'll need to get those just out, so. If we could maybe choose a night, night, we could advertise on the website. But if you only have half twenty-four hour notice, you don't need to do it tomorrow.
We can wait until the twenty first. Or. Trying to verify it, the twenty first is, us leaning towards the twenty first and if it's not, then we want, the, the, the week notice. Understand that the week notice is required when you do an emergency. And you have to have all counselors to do the emergency, that's why you have to do.
Or to make a deadline on meeting, otherwise.
Okay, so we certainly have policy as like a ten minute meeting, since everybody's gonna maybe be at the city county port meeting. So we'll advertise a, a special meeting now.
As soon, as soon, by now.
Okay, and June nineteenth of the holiday, so. Oh, that's right, it's June eighth, yeah, we're close that day.
You can't do anything.
Yeah, it's in the, so your twenty-four hour notice gets a little tighter.
Well, we have to announce it on Saturday, not even Friday to sixteen.
We, we got time. Uh, we'll, we'll get that, if, if we can just get a confirmation that we'll have. So we'll send that on your email, let you know.
Okay, I will, I will be unable to attend the city county port meeting either whether it's that week or the week after, I'll be out of town.
So you're going for close to me.
So, yeah, I was just wondering if you guys ready, well, this meeting is hereby adjourned.